Okay, we better get going, 7:00. First, we gotta acknowledge the open meeting floor, which is over there. And then, second, Dana Lappel.
Okay, Arns. Evans.
I've talked with both of them, they're both, Roger's on his way and Bob said they'll be here too, so I would consider them excused, as I'm sure you would.
Okay, Gunther?
Yes.
Langy. And Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Okay, we got a new Washington, Nikki.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Gunther?
Yes.
Any absent? Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Arns?
Yes.
And then absent, motion carried, 4-0.
Okay, public comment?
Public comment for this parental involvement is just if they had anything to say, and I don't, do we have anyone here? Am I correct? Who wants to say anything about parent involvement? We're good.
And then we'll move on. New business, review and discuss and take all necessary actions. Presentation of the whole student fee policy and appendix.
Does it say student fee? Oh, I might, huh?
Student fee.
Oh, for parental involvement, okay, alright. This is an annual item, I put it up here and I think you can see it as well on your end. This is annual, this is required basically to go over the various things that parents might complain about or have an objection about, like a textbook or a test or curriculum. It also says that we need to have a complaint form, if they have that, which we have, and I've included that in these attachments. Also to say upon reasonable advance, the parents can attend and monitor courses, assemblies, counseling sessions, and other instructional things if they wish. Parents are encouraged, number three, to communicate to school staff when a parent believes it, to be appropriate for their child to be excused from testing and things like that. Number five, notify parents when a child may be subjected to a standard norm referenced or criterion reference test. In other words, we should notify parents that they're going to be tested, like the ACT, we do that newsletter or whatever the case is. Number six, surveys, if we're going to be handing out surveys, we're supposed to notify parents there as well. That is it, it's real quick, really it's meant in case someone does have something to say, a parent, this is their time to do so. And just to say that we're following these items and we have the correct forms if they wanna attend something at school or they want to complain about something that's in the curriculum, so it's pretty straightforward. Here's the complaint form, we updated this when I came, it was the same thing, it was just outdated a little bit, it looked like it'd been copied several, many times, so we've just cleaned it up, and you can see there, pretty straightforward, really. And so unless you have any questions, that is really it for that meeting. Yeah?
It's in time.
On January?
Yep, there you go.
We're gonna need to set the, the next meeting.
I already deleted that. Can you do the second?
A second.
Okay. Vanheek?
Yes.
Arns? Gunther?
Yes.
Potts?
Yep.
Motion carried, 4-0.
Okay, I'm gonna get out of that meeting and then we'll transition to the next one, which I'll have to stop and start the next meeting. 7:05, and this is the student fees policy hearing. Whole nother meeting altogether. Yeah, and she has to get into it too. Yeah, and we'll do the same thing when she gets there.
That finger was too...
Just say we've only three meetings since you've been gone.
We're separate.
Okay.
Okay, let's start with the open meeting room again, if anybody's interested, if you have a live call.
Arns?
Yes.
Evans, absent, Gunther?
Yes.
I need absent, Potts?
Yes.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Ten, four, zero. Four, Evans, and two absent.
I'll make a motion, motion to move.
Second. Go ahead, second.
Okay, Arns?
Yes.
Evans, absent, Gunther?
Yes.
I need absent, Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4-0.
Since we got the, the comment again.
Gunther's in, he's okay.
New business, review and discuss and take all necessary actions. Student fees policies and appendix.
Yes, again, we're required to do this annually, we have a student fees policy, and, but what most people will be looking at, honestly, with the student fees policy is the appendix, which I'll pull up for you here. And it basically says as best that we can do. You know, I need to get out of this one here, pardon me, I'll get back in, apologize, I didn't do it on the screen for you. Here we go. Alright. There we go, now you can see. The various things that students might be charged, and we have, there's eight pages of this, and it tries to list summer school courses, copies, school meals, they have fees required for labs, or says things like shorts for PE and various items. FFA, since man is here, you know, we have no more than $50, I believe she said it was $25, so yeah, we do our best to have this be as complete as we can and stick to it as best as we can, so. Again, this was just an opportunity for parents if they chose to come and talk during the parent comment about any fees that we might charge. Nothing here, the only thing really that's changed in here this year are lunch prices, as they went up a little bit, so we update those. Otherwise, this is unchanged really from last year.
Gunther?
Yes.
Langy, absent, Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Arns?
Yes.
Evans, absent, motion carried, 4-0, or 4-2, or 4-0.
Okay. Alright. We'll end that one. Yeah, I installed that too. That's never good. Alright. I will get to the next meeting as well. Okay, here's this one. Here's Roger. Excuse me, is that right between me and you?
Yes.
Hello?
Roger's gonna be here in a few seconds.
Yeah, I have your computer, yes. Okay, alright, alright.
I'm gonna get back, because I, I was locked up, so I gotta get all the way back.
Okay, that's fine. Got one minute to spare.
That mirror caused me to...
Yeah, I don't know what happened there, but I don't know if Mr. Rabelt's... As you know, Mr. Rogge had his open house, and again, I apologize, it's 7:30 and I put this out.
I heard it was a reminder, the text message reminder though, that was nice.
It's seven, so...
Thanks. Just no problem.
Well? We're ready, Mr. Vice President. If you are.
Yeah? I'm on a different page. I just turned that to the...
Are you okay? Do you need me to help you get on?
I haven't got on following, but I still have the student fees policy.
Okay. Maybe that hiccuped.
Yeah, something. Let's, there.
Can you follow?
Yep.
There you go.
There we go. Well, I think we call, we need to order. And again, we all acknowledge the placement of the open meeting floor, so... And we have a live call.
Arns?
Yes.
Evans, absent, Gunther?
Yes.
I need absent, Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
More present, two absent.
Motion to continue.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Arns?
Yes.
Evans, absent, Gunther?
Yes.
I need absent, Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4-0.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, I got him in too.
Yeah, this is, I suppose we reload and reconnect. Hopefully not going to continue this all night. I refreshed mine, if you know how to do that.
I got it all set.
Claire, are you able to refresh?
Sure.
That circle.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
It's sticky. There you go. Okay. As I recall, I wanna say last August perhaps this happened. I think a lot of new people come on and maybe they had last time, a lot of traffic, not normal, but I think it was last August, honestly. Okay. Did we have, did you have... Questions if you need me to go through that? Okay. Oh, you gotta refresh it here too.
It's got...
Is it good?
I think it is, yeah.
That was still...
They all were concerned about those ones, yes.
Get this here. Get there. Parental involvement again, you're supposed to...
That's...
Yeah. You wanna, you wanna go back to parental involvement? Wanna do that again?
Not particularly. It's kind of a still...
Alright. We'll go and all the later consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda is to approve previous minutes, approve secretary treasury report, approve district bills.
So, who?
I'll second.
Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Arns?
Yes.
Evans, absent, Gunther?
Yes.
Langy, absent, motion carried, 4-0.
Oh my gosh.
Dinner again?
Hey, sorry folks, I wish I could control this, well, we'll keep moving forward, you know, the good news is while we're reloading, Mr. Vice President, would it be okay if we just started our reports while we reconnect?
We was, when I have the administration reports, starting out with Johnny, doing the...
I'll pull it up for you too.
Okay, there were a couple changes to my report, just a couple minor things, nothing major. New staff for the high school is Ms. Allison Weave, she's our new science teacher taken over from Mr. Homer, she's reported, I think, she's excited to get going here. Ms. Maggie Schulte, this was one you guys probably were not aware of until recently, since we were not aware of her, she'll be a student teacher from Wayne State College under the supervision of Ms. Kathy Homer. You know, we'll see how she does student teaching wise, but she's been, ever since I've called her, the day I called her, she gave me the next day, got books, she's been ready to go and been here and excited and scared and nervous and all at the same time, so, but it's good to see somebody who wants to be here, and she was very discouraged when I couldn't accept her as a student teacher because we had two new teachers. So she actually wanted to student teach here and I had to turn her down, so then, when this whole thing happened, I called her up and said, "If you wanna try that," and she was excited, and there was no hesitation, yes. So I'm glad to have her on board, late, but glad she's here. We have Ms. Lisa Pack, who you guys may have seen around or heard about, she's done a great job this summer with all the technology things. She'll be our instructional technologist along with her special ed teacher. She's put in a lot of time this summer putting in book camp things, getting things ready for the one-to-one night we have these last couple Mondays, and I think she's gonna be a great asset resource for these IPads, for the one-to-one rollout that we're doing this year. And then we have Mr. Mickey Door, who's a social science teacher, he comes to us from Wayne State College, originally a Bluefield young man, so he's been on Wayne State, he got his undergraduate degree, then he went back on his masters to be right away in history, so I think that'd be a nice addition. He was also on the Wayne State track team and was an assistant coach for the track team, the sprinters, as a graduate assistant coach, so, nice kid to get in here, and he's excited too, they're all very excited, but I think very nervous for tomorrow, but that's expected, with what's going on.
Is Mr. Door taking full first place or...
Yes, Mr. Door will be taking full first place, and Ms. Schulte will be Mr. Ginata. There was one exception, I did have to switch the schedule where Mr. Door will actually be our junior IP teacher the first half of the year, being that Ms. Schulte is a history major, not phys ed also, she's not able to student teach out of her area, so she could be the junior IP, but after, after the year she came, after the first half, so. But everything works out very well. This summer, I attended the Midwest Power School Summit in Kearney in June, we said it in June, just goes over some of the power school things, there's so many announcements to power schools, figure out what we need as administrators, what's good, what isn't good, and the different things the states require now, being, get rid of the old NSSRS one to identify, so just listing out some things there, ways for reporting. And I also attended the 2018 Principal Summit in Kearney in July. This was a thing that the, the press partner that actually paid some principals from high achieving schools to come and talk about how he can help schools that maybe aren't high achieving, some different things, we need infrastructure, and they wanted us to come and have much input on, on how to get these schools on that level, on a higher level, so I'm just kinda need to talk to some of the principals around the state at these schools, big and small, and the things they do and things they have and things they offer that maybe will help us with some of our, we need ways that we can help our students out. I also attended administrator days, some of the sessions I went to, I went to the rule of ten review, rule of ten is how they govern the different credits we have, how they can PE, different things, we have to make sure we have our requirements for the different areas. Also talks about a few other things with staff, and how many things you have in and out of your area, and things like that. I will listen to teammates, teammates is a program that Tom Osborne started, a lot of people know about it, called the Tom Osborne teammates program, but it's actually just teammates program now, and I think it's a great thing, I've been kinda dragging my feet, started these few, first three years here, but I would like to see us maybe open a chapter of teammates. I'm here at Cropp, I think we have a group of kids that can really reach out and help, it doesn't really cost a school anything to do, they can step in and roll it out, so I'll be looking at, I'm doing that, Tom Osborne actually comes after the rollouts, he does something like that, he does, he's the big speaker that I can do that stuff. Battle Creek just did it last year, so I've talked to that principal Jeff over there, and he, he says it's been a great deal for them to get started over there. At the last two schools I was at, we had a teammates program, I was in some, entered at my last two schools, so I do think it's a good program for the kids, and it's not just for, the thing that people understand is this, not just for kids who are in trouble, it's for all types of kids who just need to be a role model, and need a good adult in their life. The other thing I talked to is a curriculum review, there was a Google classroom, there was a talk from NSSRS to advisor, which was kind of a scary thing to know what's going on, advisor pulls things instantly now, there's no longer wait till the quarter's over, now record everything, put it in some format, now it's gonna be pulled instantly, so there's a lot of little things that are kinda intimidating this year to see how it works and how it goes over, but we've had some test schools, so hopefully it's gone well. And the last thing, I went to a session over at the pre-ACT and the ACT, we had an option of either getting the pre-ACT free for our juniors or seniors, or we could get, actually sophomore, we spoke there, or we could get the online ACT prep program through ACT, where we're to use John Baylor, it's free to us, and John Baylor's one of the best ACT programs we have, so we use John Baylor, so we decided to go with getting a, the pre-ACT free for all of our sophomores to take, so our sophomores will take the pre-ACT at the same time that our juniors are taking the ACT. We have to get that script together, but that'll be this next spring, when that all happens during that big state testing window, so a lot of fun things going on there. I had our new student orientation last Monday, we had all about six students show up, and then I had a few patrol tonight where I went through with them tonight, then they got to know some of the things, and did a quick rundown of that with them, for those that couldn't make it. On my original course as CCC, which is Craft's Media Club donated $500, it was actually Main Street Treasures, so I had to correct that, Main Street Treasures has donated $500 for us to use in different ways for teachers. They said, "I wouldn't do it," so Mark and I need to sit down, they got $500 for the elementary school, $500 for the high school, they did give $500 to San Rules as well, and it's for administration use, for staff in different ways, she said, "Whatever we see fit." It could be for reimbursement supplies, which gets kinda hard to say who does and who doesn't, she goes, "Or it could just be for, hey, we're gonna get you a meal today, and that way it doesn't come out of the school budget, there's nothing there, it's throughout this money that they donate for us to use towards things, appreciation for staff in ways we see fit," which I thought's a great, great way to give back to some of the staff members here. First day with staff was on last Thursday, the ninth, we had professional development with Ms. Pack along with ESU One, we also still have the suicide prevention videos that are due Friday, anybody who is in contact with kids, that's custodians, that's office staff, that's teachers, that's parents, anybody who is in contact with kids needs to watch those videos and have an understanding of what they can look for in case we do have a student who isn't doing the greatest mentally, and we can hopefully get that caught before it becomes a big problem or a big issue for us. First day with students will be tomorrow, August 14th, there is a 1 o'clock dismissal that day. We'll start Encore officially on August 23rd, although some teachers will require kids coming to Encore even sooner than that, but it won't be officially started until then with office referrals if they aren't showing up. Our picture day will be on Friday, September 21st, and if you have, you may or may not be aware that homecoming has been moved from Friday, September 7th, which was really early, just some reasons why we had to do that, and we're gonna move it to now Friday, September 28th, which is the last Friday in September.
When will Coronation be, you're saying Coronation was on like a Monday?
Coronation will be back on a Sunday now.
Oh, well.
Yeah, Coronation will go to a Sunday, since we didn't have school on Monday, being that it was Labor Day, so we had it on that Monday evening, so Sunday evening, thinking that he might still be out of town, Sunday camping or whatever for that weekend, but now we'll have it on a Sunday, back to Sunday where it normally is, and we'll do the same thing as always, the main part up here at the gym, the band, you can perform with all their band members, football kids will be able to do it that night, we'll probably tuck a war and a bonfire maybe last year, I think kids tend to like that, and we'll do something similar, put that on a Sunday.
Does Encore count as part of the school day, hour-wise?
Yes, we are able to count that, being that we have some rules in place on what Encore is with reteaching, and it's a structured education time set aside for students to make the extra practice. So yes, we are able to count that, the state allows us at this point to count that.
But is it, it's not required for all?
Correct, it's not required for all, but we still are able to count it at this point, they're allowing us to now, that could change in the future, but as of now, I'm still, as far as I'm aware of, we're still able to count those 25 minutes towards instructional time, being that we have kinda a structure to it, it's not just a free time. We are all, if you worry about homework as well, we are able to count homework because we have the, we have the required four books per year with a 15-minute reading period in there, and once they've done their four books, then they can just work on homework, being there's a stipulation requirement of the time being used for some kind of training trade, which is reading, we're able to count that as well.
And then the free pre-ACT for sophomores, will you then suggest sophomores take the ACT or not?
Um, that's, I have my daughter take it, I think it's a good thing to take that. For sophomores, I think, I think especially at the end of their sophomore year, now they're taking the pre-ACT, and I think about that is, the pre-ACT is very, very similar to ACT, the same time constraint, it's the same everything.
Oh, so it's like a test?
Yes, it is, yeah, it is an ACT test, yes, yeah, it's like a pre-test.
But it doesn't count.
But what...
But it doesn't count.
Does not count towards any kind of college reporting, or does not count towards state reporting, that's correct. But we do get immediate feedback, which is nice, it's a little bit quicker turnaround, since it's not an actual test that counts towards any kind of things for college or the state level, but it's still nice, it gives them an indicator of how well they will do, and the nice thing now, now we don't have to use taking the ACT for the first time, never seen it before, which we have had here in the past couple years with the ACT being the new state test, so I think it'll be a great thing. I talked to a lot of different schools on how they do things, being the ACT has been the state test now, and a lot of them say they're doing the pre-ACTs like we are, they're doing it at the same time, juniors doing the ACT, that way you can have plenty of proctors. With the pre-ACT, you don't have to have an official proctor like the ACT. Ms. Rossman and myself are the ones that proctor the ACT in the juniors, because there's some certain stipulations you have to have. This year, however, I will not be able to proctor the ACT, because my daughter's taking it, so I cannot be a proctor, even if she's not in my room, I still not, I cannot be a proctor that day, so we'll have to have somebody else proctor it, which that'll help us out if we have the pre-ACT, I can proctor the pre-ACT, let one of their staff members proctor the ACT. So there are a few little hiccups in there that we'll walk through, but I think that'll be a good schedule for, half the school will be taking some counter tests.
Teammates, Portia has teammates, and it is overwhelming, it's a huge success, teammates is, I mean, the community supports you, get relationships that are developed with students and people in the community that normally wouldn't exist, and it's all done on school, primary school, makes a little law material, it's a good approach to the way.
Could you be an advisor or somebody to run the teammates program then?
Um, I would be the, I would be able to take that on. In large, if it's a small school, it's a principal, if it's a bigger school, usually it's somebody decides, administrator, that knows that, but the last schools I, the last school I was at was the principal that did that, and at Battle Creek, Jeff, last, Allenway, he, he...
Hines.
Hines, there he goes, Hines, he's the guy there as well too. It's a little bit important upfront, because you gotta find people willing to come in and be mentors, and then you gotta find times when they can come in, a lot of times they do it over lunch, they'll come and take the kid, leave lunch with the kid, and talk to them, just talk, tell them that being big, then they try to do like one fun night a year, where they do one movie night, and teammates allows some money to go towards their, so it doesn't come out of pocket, so teammates gives you some money to do one like group activity fun night, and whether it be everybody that bought some movie, or whether it be just have some games in the jam, or whatever it be, that they allow some money to do that, to be free at cost for the kids, and they're gonna have it.
Struggle, give measures by giving help, working on students, you know, so people are stepping up to the car, they can build a relationship with them.
Does Watson have that?
Yes, science isn't yet.
How many kids would you guess would be involved in this program? Any idea?
You know, the first year, I know like, they, from what I've heard, I have... Um, you know, the first year, I know like they, they, from what I've heard, I have, obviously, but like Jeff said over there, their goal was to match about ten to fifteen kids the first year, try to get ten to fifteen kids started. And then the next year try to add, you know, five to six per year. It comes, you know, they can come in by regulations from a lot of ways. Parents have to be asked, parents have to agree with their kid being a part of the program, and parents say no, their kid, their kid won't be involved with it. You know, so it kinda feels, I think that there's a, those group of kids that could really use a nice male or female role model and goes to state or the community or from somebody who's able to, to give that, that, you know, that thirty minutes a week to come in and see them. You know, it's just once a week, thirty minutes, and come in and, and spend some time with a young, young man or gal and, and hopefully have some good conversations and help them with, with things. And, you know, it means a lot to them to have somebody in the community, an adult that knows their name, that knows them, and when they see them, they can say, hey, how you doing? You know, talk to them and, and, you know, that's another thing I do with my teammate, I would take them to some games, maybe his parents couldn't take him to a game. Today, Friday, you wanna go to the football game, okay, come on, be with the football game, you know, do some things like that. That's just need to get them to see, you know, and they, they stick with them till their senior year. And then if they want to, they can re-enroll with another one and bring them through and just kind of where they start and what it is.
Good thing it's a project, it's the help to try, the liability issues are all taken care of, it's all been tested. And it worked, it's really successful.
Teammates has a whole background check, if somebody wants to be a teammate mentor, they have to come in and they have to do all, answer a questionnaire, fill out the paperwork. There's a big background check, doesn't it, they don't let anybody be a, be a mentor, because they, they don't want to have the negative things happen in their program. So they, they do really, do a lot of background checks.
Any questions if not?
Yeah, just trying to give you some numbers, since all of the fall sports have officially started now last Monday. Cross country, there's nineteen kids out, I believe nine boys and ten girls are out cross-country. Coach Allen said he checked out forty boys. So, for us, that's moving up there, okay? Volleyball, there's twenty-five, and girls golf, we actually have one girl golfer and she can actually be part of some of the kids. So, we're trying to work with trying to get a cast to come up with, what do we do for transportation and coaching and who to pay and what? So, I didn't hear back from B J or superintendent yet today, but we're just trying to feel out this and how it's gonna work. So, whether or not, you know, the co-op will continue, teammates will be seeing just because of logistics and stuff. Right now, that's where we're at. Volleyball, we'll be playing a jamboree game this Thursday in Humphrey. They actually will have that in their scrimmage amongst their, amongst the team themselves next Tuesday, starting at six o'clock. And then their first regular season contest, the tournament in the lineup, starting, walking in on August thirty, so it'll be Thursday. Football, we'll have a Gatorade scrimmage this coming Friday at six o'clock, the scrimmage's coming down. Their first contest will be the following week, a week from this Friday actually, and they'll be going to open break. So, there and then the thirty-first will be back here at the, at the, at the, at the. And then August, Augustana is gonna be the site for cross-country's first meet. They'll go up there for an evening meet, they do the little run, they always do, kids enjoy it, they have fun. Little bit different atmosphere environment, they've got college teams running and a high school team, I think they even do a mascot race and whatnot, because I was contacted to see if we had a mascot. So they'll be doing that on the thirty-first as well, the evening. The band is doing something, a little bit different this year, the fundraiser, trying it out. They're gonna do what they call Ford Drive for Your School Event, which is gonna be sponsored by Moody Motors. They're gonna do it on October first. And if I remember correctly from Mrs. Leader, Moody will bring over some vehicles. And I think they're gonna do an uptown sports stuff, I think they're doing, they're doing it at night, I think that night as well. And the band members, I believe, will go out and they'll ask people to come down and drive a vehicle, test drive a vehicle, whether they do it or not. But for every person that tests drive a vehicle, Moody Motors will incorporate over some money every day, twelve bucks, I think, something like that. So, something different and she thought, you know, try it and see what happens, so do that. Ag education, Mrs. Mann, she spent several days this summer developing a precision agricultural curriculum. They must have entered into an agreement two years ago with Northeast Community College. So there's six area schools, there were five lessons that were developed towards curriculum and she plans to incorporate it into her intro agri-science classes, possibly some other classes as well, she sees fit. And then Northeast will bring out their mobile precision ag lab and give the kids some hands-on experience with precision ag technology. So, that's something that's not excited. She also applied for and received a seventeen hundred dollar grant to purchase a tower garden accessories for the classroom. It was a grant that was provided by Farm Credit Services of America, I think they sell the box in the, so it's good. Some other stuff, the accessories.
She needs a bigger room again.
Just quadruple the room.
F F A also had a lot of exhibitors at the Knox County Fair this past week. And then they also found some time for ten F F A members to go over to the Culver Pioneer, they always have their family picnic and whatnot and help organize and conduct the children's games. I think Culver Pioneer and the families, they enjoy having the kids come over, they're very complimentary of our kids and the way they interact with everybody. They've been there for several years, so, yeah. And that is all I have, if I have any questions at all.
Yeah, did you say we have one person from, in golf, girls golf?
No, the three that we kinda fought as the last spring, decided not to.
We talked about it, this, this next year, in May, we'll, we'll ask kids to commit and then decide, and if we don't have that commitment in May, we drop it earlier. You know, she has to submit whether or not we're gonna participate, you say by June?
Yeah, we're gonna do a co-op, all co-ops have to be submitted by June one.
So, we have to proceed. Just watch it again and, you know, sometimes they say they're going out and if they, you know, August comes and they're not, not a lot you can do. Okay. Uh, the investment letter that the board had asked to do and it had brought to my attention, we did that this year, provided teachers, I think I sent you maybe a screenshot of it early on, but I continue to tweak it and, but thank you for that, I like that. Again, on the bottom of it, I said, you know, thank you, you know, on behalf of the Board of Education Administration, we thank you for your service and that all of their various items that they're paid for, their salary, extra duty, insurance, all their benefits and things were on that. Pretty, pretty easy to do, really, so, and I liked it, so thank you for that. Let you know that was completed. The board priorities, we're working on those, as you know. This is, I've been working with Marsha Haring just on wording and I think next month then we maybe move forward and maybe adopt those officially, but this is where we're at currently. The highlighted items that you're looking at, we took, of course, your notes and your, your, the key points when we met this summer and we're working on wording here. Develop and adopt a short and long-term facility plan, because I won't read all these. But with that, also make sure that we consider the before and after-school programs in early childhood, I remember that was a discussion. Consider the appropriate facility modifications, the air conditioning in this case, that's a more of a short-term goal, I think, than a long-term. Curriculum and instruction under that, of course, we have interest in expanding and sustaining dual-credit opportunities, expanding college and career readiness, of course, job shadowing and things like that. And I think with Ms. Ross, Mrs. Rossman's course, we're actually going to be implementing that already this year. Plan and development to continue that engagement with community members, okay? That'll be part of below and highlighted in yellow is that strategic plan, is how to go about that, so. We have a strategic plan, that's your umbrella, and under that will be a facilities plan and all kinds of goals. So these are the, the main points, you don't wanna get too, too long and too wordy either, but keep those and look at those and then we'll bring those back if that's okay, next month and maybe officially with a, maybe a board of action, adopt those as our, as our goals. If you wanted to change them in any way, let me know, or add something to them, please let me know. But those, those were our key points, taken from, from your discussion. There are N A S B area meetings, Wednesday, October third, if you'd like to go, please let me know, we usually congregate here and drive down together. Tammy, Roger, Claire, I see that you have achieved a certain point award level this year. You can go even if you didn't earn a reward, or an award. Well, I, I think after attending so many meetings, being on a certain time, you know, you, you achieve and they, they, they supply, they give you something. Is it a, depending on what level you get, you're at?
Brand new car?
Yeah, right, a pink, pink Cadillac. Page, page two is the agenda, if you would let me know if you'd like to attend, I think often we've had maybe a couple, two or three attend, it's varied from year to year. You can see it's like at four-thirty in the afternoon where, and then it starts at five and they have dinner and recognition at the end, it's, it's a nice evening. If you can make it, if not, certainly no requirement.
Where is this at?
This is in Norfolk. Okay. That's all I have for you tonight. That is Wednesday, October third. Way too far out. I can even ask next month, yeah, but I've put it on your radar maybe and then I can, if I remember to have that, I'll ask again.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, progressive.
Did you get started?
Yes.
I've been by.
They, early on, took out a bunch of drywall. Now, he's boarded up, taken out those windows, he was out there last week, I saw he has landscaped and removed a bunch of dirt from the sides and I think it's, that's thus far, unless something happened today, I've been here. I don't know, when you're driving by, if anyone noticed anything more than that, but. Yeah.
But he is there.
Yes. Yes. There has been activity. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Wait, wait on this garage.
Oh, that's up to you, you, you certainly can. Maybe he's using the restroom or something. You can circle back if you wish to, Mr. President.
Let's go ahead and do that first time.
As you know, we had a resignation, a late, unexpected from Trevor Krugman. He says he is going to resign from his post as social science teacher at Craft Community School as well as extracurricular duties. You know, it's difficult when you hear that news late, but as you know, we, we circled the wagons and had lots of conversations with Nebraska Department of Education, with various other entities to help us out, to devise a plan of attack. We think we have a, we have a good one, we have a student teacher, as Mr. Ostermeyer mentioned. We have a fantastic retired teacher who's going to help supervise that, of course, we're gonna pay special attention to that as well, in this instance. So, we, we feel comfortable with that, we've had student teachers before. And then, of course, we'll look to hire for that position January, so that is our current plan. Just as a general statement, you know, if someone does sign a contract in Nebraska and they break it with something like that, yeah, there, there can be repercussions of that, I don't know the exact, you can lose your teaching certificate in Nebraska. I don't recall exactly the length of time that is, I think it might have changed, maybe one year to three years, something to that effect, so don't quote me on that. But, yeah, there are repercussions for that, yeah. Quite honestly, if someone doesn't wanna come, there's not a lot you can do, other than, you know.
Can I ask, did you give us a reason and can you talk about it?
No specific reason. Okay. But, we, we dealt with it as best and as quickly as we could in an acceptable way, where we're comfortable with it.
I'll make a motion, you're getting accepted for resignation.
And he, it's Harms Evans?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Langley?
Yeah.
Potts?
Yep.
Motion carried six zero.
Okay, we have several new staff up, this is Bridget Schuhmeyer, and she is coordinator of elementary guidance. This is Chelsea Wagner, is fifth grade, and this Megan Wolf, we hired as the parent professional. Some summer projects, we worked on the drainage on the playground to get it to go to run now east. So, we installed a drinking fountain that has the bottled fuel station. That's very exciting, and we had a sink and we worked on that. But that's, that's actually a big deal, so. Kindergarten is twenty-five, it goes. I have no idea where you are in the board meeting, so I apologize for that, for being late and stuff.
Oh, yeah, we haven't gotten to that yet, right?
So, one of the changes I'm gonna want tonight, which would be, I think, an action item on the board, would be a change in my parent's student handbook. And that would be, would be a release, currently that's the language, is there now, new language takes away the yes/no and just says that if you don't want your child's image or likeness or name published, please call their management office. And one of the things this does is it'll write a handbook, how Mr. Westerman is at the high school. And I wanted to do that, so I may suggest to go before that change tonight. We're five administrator days, there's, there's, I think eight sessions, there's six of them, there are nuts and bolts of E S S A Title I. An Indian staff member presented, I went to one on school climate, a principal by the name of Gene Rosell presented. I went to a curriculum meeting and a staff person, Miss Tan, presented all that. I went to an S R P session, that's standard response protocol, safety and security measures. I went to an M T S S, that's multi-tiered systems of support, that's an A D P staffer, that. And then I went to another standard response protocol slash I love you guys presentation, that was presented by Salsis and the administration. Tonight we had our open house, we had a really, really good turnout. Grab your folks from the Craft Community Club, so we're glad, thank you.
Bring any up here?
What's that?
Bring any up here?
I was already late.
We would have excused him, wouldn't we?
Yeah. If the ice cream wasn't melted, I would have.
There's never bad ice cream.
That's right. Number seven, Main Street Treasures donated five hundred dollars to the. Our safety and security day, we will practice fire, fire, secure weather, evacuation and intruder. We're going to practice that at the second grade school, four drills in about a half hour in the morning. Practice a little bit on some of that throughout here. There is an M T S S conference, multi-tiered systems of support, which is a fancy way of saying, trying to help students not at benchmark. You know, at benchmark, you're reading in math, at the end of August, we can help with that. The Knox County Fair, wristbands, we had a big group of students there, so that's, that's awesome. Finally, I look forward to this upcoming year, I enjoy what I do and I want to thank each of you, we have to, you're a part of the Craft Community Schools. Questions? That's myself. Interesting. So, complete. Claire?
We have the kindergarten, the pink song.
What's that?
I believe that runs into the kindergarten, the practice, I think there's a block.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, no Kevin, you're here too.
Thank you, Roger.
I'd like to more.
That's real. If there are any questions, we'll pop to the next item. I'll do business with the NSSA's necessary action regarding lease and land.
I'm invited to business man here to speak to this. Of course, last year, you know, the district bought land, both north and south. David Tramp leases the north, it's five point five, uh, no, it's 5.5 tillable acres, and Mr. Ostermore leases the south land, 12.8. Mrs. Mann has expressed a desire, farmers, and I have her speak to that, and as to what her land might be, she doesn't have a long speech, but more of a commitment, and I'll let her describe that to you.
I need to say my name and everything?
Sure, you sure can.
I think you know, I think whoever's recording probably knows me, but, you know, I was asked by the administrators if we'd be interested in doing something with the field north and south of the school, and I would be interested in doing something with both plots. I didn't know how many acres there were, so I asked Mr. Dahl today, so, so that's a doable number of acres. And I've put out a question, email to the, on the Nebraska Ag and Listerv, and if anybody that has school farms, you know, with land owned by the school. And I had 14 responses, that was really good, that are doing things like this, and none were right in this area because they don't have that opportunity, so they're all from all across the state, and most are, most of the land is operating, well, most are using it for, you know, corn plots or different things. Of course, this would be ideal for kids getting out there and testing soil, you know, doing all kinds of things, actually riding along when it's being planted and things like that, when it's being harvested, et cetera, so ideal location. Some use some of that land next to the school. Some schools are using a little animal lab of sorts, part of the land, so I'm not, isn't something I'd want to take on right now, but it's always an option in the future. I don't know what the rules are, where we're located and, you know, the area, so. The, no, only, out of 14 schools, only one actually has to pay any rent to the school, so that's something you guys would have to consider. The rest is used free of charge and there would be no cost to the school, but, you know, I would be involved, the chapter would be involved, some parents would be involved, community members, and there would be no cost for the school for any of the inputs, for sure, any part of it, just the normal taxes and whatever, but it might also involve the not collecting that rent if you're willing to do that, so, about $3,000. So, do you have questions about?
Come on.
I don't have a specific plan right today, but I needed to know we have the land before I move out.
Would you use the outputs for the farmers that would help, like say you plant corn and they come with the corn through it's the profits?
Well, the, most of the community, the community members are willing to do that with the profit, going back to the Ag and program, the chapter, Alpha Chapter.
That's awesome. I can spread it.
I have a lot of former students who are in ag, ag business around the area, and I know that I can call on them. There are students that are growing, most of them, students are seed salesmen, students are farming that would help provide the equipment and everything. And with this precision ag curriculum that I've helped develop through Northeast, that we agreed to as a, as the administration agreed to a couple of years ago, I think it'll be great when they bring out that mobile lab in the spring to do it on a small scale and then hopefully that would be before they actually plant these fields, they can actually go out there and see it in real, you know, real life, so that'd be kind of fun to see.
Possibilities that I may are endless here with the tracking, the measuring, the bookkeeping, the business side of it.
Yeah, the mapping, all kinds of things.
The community involvement with people, the location of our land, right here, where you don't even have to transport, I mean, it's, it's all right here. I think, I think it's a-
Hybrids, special experimental stuff, somebody would love to contest one.
Yeah, and there could be, you could do all kinds of things, I mean, we just have to get, you know, more people.
When does the lease end?
Yes, thank you for asking. I was just going to say, the recommended motion, if, if this is what the board wants to do and Mrs. Mann's that she wanted to do, would be to terminate those lease agreements, because I have to notify those people for the 2019 by September 1st in writing, so.
With a written letter?
Right.
If you don't, they get farmed.
Right, which is exactly why we're discussing this now, and I need to notify us right away if that's what the board wants to-
And if we could overtake it, start January with that, or is it September that?
I don't know for sure. I think-
That I honestly don't know.
That's a good question.
It's-
You still get it, you still get a raise for it, so I don't know when the lease is.
It's for the 2019 crop year, so I don't know exactly when that.
I don't know. Hopefully I should look at some of those I got.
First market.
No, that's one tick or one. Bought? I don't know. I don't think it's a power thing. One thing I think we should think about, I, I rarely believe this, I, I remember when you guys had that test run out in Barburg. But I think, you know, if the crop prices come back, you could really start looking at some, even on 20 acres, but, but that's not, you can start seeing some real numbers. And I think you need to have some kind of a plan as to allocate the funds. Some goes there for phase, some goes back into the program, some goes to, I don't know, Greenhouse or whatever.
Right.
You need to have some system, you know, a bench plan for some of the, some of the-
Yeah, I wouldn't have any issue with that, I mean.
Small bill.
I like the idea just of nesting in kids.
Thirty, four hundred dollars, right? Oh, yeah, such a cheap.
Why make the motion?
I'll say. And minimal.
I made discussions, so I gotta go and take action, so they're made it.
Everything went bad, you have control of noxious weeds. That's what's come near service.
We'll learn about noxious weeds.
Yeah, it'll be a money experiment.
I mean, anything else?
I teach them about noxious weeds.
Teach them how to work beans.
We don't want them to experience it out here.
I don't know what that is anymore.
Take the floor.
Great idea.
I bet they all drop out of class.
Thank you.
Arms?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Langley?
Yep.
Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Moving on to the next item, it'll be the transfer of funds. General funding to the-
Yes, we've done this the last couple of years. At the end of the financial year like this, 30,000 we've done the last two years. We'll do 20,000 this year and see how that goes as well. We can always transfer again, but typically it's towards the end for this upcoming year, so. Do you want?
Transfer, transfer?
I'll say.
Evans?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Langley?
Yep.
Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Moving on to the next item, it'll be the transfer of funds. General funding to the-
Yes, we've done this the last couple of years. At the end of the financial year like this, 30,000 we've done the last two years. We'll do 20,000 this year and see how that goes as well. We can always transfer again, but typically it's towards the end for this upcoming year, so. Do you want?
Transfer, transfer?
I'll say.
Evans?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Langley?
Yep.
Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item is the update policy 31. Oh, I understand this very.
Right, and some changes in this, this is a long policy, about 17 pages, but a few, a few changes to it. One deals with emergency exclusions. In other words, it might be, you know, a disease or something that we have to, you know, not go through normal channels, but still, the students have certain rights. The next change in it was previously the policy submitted, or excuse me, prohibited students from recording others at school without the permission of being recorded, but now modern and common technologies, they can transmit live images and sounds but not record, so it's all about that word, so they changed the, you know, you can't, it, it updated that language, so even though it's not recording, you know, it's live things, basically. So that was the second, and then the third part of this one is, under an old law, principal was required to notify law enforcement when the principal knew or suspected that a student committed an act that would, that was specified in our long-term suspension or expulsion, and now it's under the new law, this is the school needs to annually review and in collaboration with the county attorney to define conduct which the principal will report to law enforcement, so that is a task that we will have to do this year. Those are the three changes in that very long student discipline policy, as recommended by your friendly lawyers. You know, they study that and send those updates to us.
I'll say.
Gunther?
Yes.
Langley?
Yep.
Potts?
Yep.
Vanheek?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item will be the update policy 31. Do some sound research. All right. Where do you want me to update for this?